Everybody will stand please.
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day. We thank you for the many blessings you have given us. And Father God, we just ask you to watch over each and every one of us here tonight, the citizens of the county and all our families. We ask you, dear Lord, to just give us wisdom and judgment as we face challenges that the county brings forth for us. And we ask all these things that we can do in your name, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Attention, salute, pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, I'll ask each one, if you will, please turn your phone off or put it on airplane mode so we don't disrupt the meeting. And anyone near a microphone, please turn your phone off or put it in your pocket. Okay, uh, do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
Make a motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
Uh, motion.
Me.
Commissioner Bone, Second Commissioner Perkins, to approve the agenda, are any additions or deletions to the agenda? If not, all in favor, let it be known by raising your hand. And it is unanimous. There are no, no one on the agenda to speak. Okay, then the consent agenda, do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Make a motion we approve the consent agenda.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion Commissioner Bone, Commissioner, Second Commissioner Childers, to approve the consent agenda, which consists of the minutes, the claims list, Sheriff's Department, reclassification of Lonnie Evan Melton, approved reclassification of Trey Maywell, approve the hire of Scott Starnes, Commission Office to approve the 2025 Agency Agreement for the National Voting Rights Act, yearly contract renewals, the County Commission authorizing the chair to sign the documents for the Chilton Airport Authority to receive funding through the Federal Aviation Administration Improvement Program, resolution to approve the invoices for the CDBG project, resolution to approve invoice for recreation trails, Road Department, resolution to approve the fiscal year 24 CROR report, resolution to approve placing signage and pavement markings to make intersection of County Road 97 and 478 a three-way stop, resolution to earmark the SECRA funds for park improvement and equipment, resolution to purchase a dump trailer for the parks in the amount of fifteen thousand dollars to be paid from the SECRA funds, resolution to approve the park job descriptions, Chilton Park Recreation Director, Chilton Park Recreation Park Manager, Chilton Park and Recreation Assistant Park Manager, Chilton County Park and Recreation Park Caretaker slash CSR, resolution to approve reclassifications of these four, Donald Giles, Gerald Arrington, David Reed, and Teddy Chambers. Any questions? All in favor, let it be known by raising your hand. And it passes unanimously. All right, brings us down to the staff reports, Commission Office.
Um, yes Chairman, I need to ask to open nominations for the Chilton-Clinton Library Board.
All right, do I have a motion to open those?
Second.
Motion Commissioner Childers, Second Commissioner Bone, to open the nominations for the Chilton-Clinton Library Board. Any questions? All in favor, raise the nomin- uh, raise, opening nominations, raise your right hand. All opposed, and it passes unanimously.
The Library Board has recommended, um, to appoint Paula Mitchell.
Okay, these nominations will be open for three meetings. So if anybody else has a nomination, uh, you can do so tonight or one of the next two meetings. Okay.
Um, I'd also like to request a resolution to accept the bids from Ironman Lawn Care, Lake Lawn Landscape, and American Lawn Care LLC for the ground maintenance bid.
Uh, motion Commissioner Bone.
Second.
Commissioner Perkins seconds a motion to accept the, the bids for ground maintenance. Any questions? All in favor, let it be known by raising your hand. All opposed, passes unanimously.
And I'd like to request a resolution to award the ground maintenance bid to Lake Lawn Landscape. They were the lowest bid.
All right, do I have a motion?
Second.
Motion Commissioner Childers, five seconds. Second Commissioner Hall to award the bid to Lake.
Lake Lawn Landscape.
Lake Lawn and Landscape. Any questions? All in favor, let it be known by raising your hand. All opposed, and it passes unanimously.
That's all I have.
Okay, uh, then it brings us down to Commissioner Reports. Commissioner Billingsley.
No sir.
Commissioner Bone.
No sir.
Commissioner Childers.
No sir.
Commissioner Hall.
No sir.
Uh, Commissioner Headley.
I think we've got nothing on the agenda or anything, but I'd just like to thank the sheriff and, uh, the litter control folks and everybody else that was involved, the road department, getting that stuff cleaned up off the outside of 145. They've done a good job and got it cleaned up.
I think we can thank the Sheriff's Department totally for that because that was a individual that put it out there and they were told to get it up. And they did so real quick. Thank you, Sheriff. All right, uh, Commissioner Perkins.
Yes, sir.
You got five minutes.
Pride of.
No, he, um, so pursuant to, uh, last night's reading of some proposed subdivision regulations, um, changes, I'm gonna ask for a, uh, resolution to schedule a public meeting for the purpose of, uh, the proposed subdivision regulation amendments to, um, have an open forum question and answer meeting.
Okay, you make that a resolution? Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, resolution by Commissioner Perkins, the second by Commissioner Childers, that we set a date for a public meeting, for an open forum discussing the proposed changes and amendments to the subdivision rules. Are there any questions?
Where we gonna have the meeting at? Cause this ain't gonna be, room ain't gonna be big enough. You better find a place to have it.
We'll have to have it in a large courtroom. There won't be any doubt about that.
Might be a challenge if you want to livestream that, just.
Yeah, that might be a challenge. I think we can make that happen. Yeah, we did it before. We make it happen again. A date?
I, I think, uh, I picked February the sixth, be Thursday night, February the sixth, at six P M, if that's good with everybody. She says she'll be back.
I'm good.
She will be, you will be back?
That's gonna conflict with Butterfly Bridge at six P M.
Do we need to let everybody have time to look at their calendars better and then set this date?
If we do, then I can, I can withdraw the motion and then we can reset it at a different time.
That's what, that's what Alan just, just said. Uh, let me ask our attorney a question. Can we set this pending an approval date and get the message out to everyone, prior, getting seven days' notice?
The chair, the chair can, yes sir.
Okay.
Okay.
Well, you can, we can pass a resolution that way, then everybody, I'm gonna task Commissioner Perkins for making sure the date is clear with all other commissioners.
All right.
And our engineer, and anyone else who, uh, needs to be there, okay? Will you amend your resolution to state that?
Yes.
And.
I'll be in my second.
Okay, so the motion is now, we will set a date agreed upon by each of the commissioners to have a public forum, uh, open meeting to discuss the proposed amendments and changes to the sub- subdivision regulation. Boy, I can't talk tonight. Uh, and it will be pending a date that will be set by the commission and will be posted seven days prior and give a public plenty of notice. By the chair. All right, is everybody as clear as I am on that?
Clear as mud.
All right, and you will be the one making sure the date's good with everybody.
Right.
Okay, any other questions? All right, all in favor, let it be known by raising your hand. All opposed, and it passes unanimously.
All right, my next, um, item on the agenda is, uh, I'm gonna be asking for a resolution uh, expressing the opposition of Chilton County Commission to any restrictions placed on fishing tournaments on the Couso River and affirming the commitment to improving local fisheries. Uh, I do have the resolution here, if you would like it completely read or summarize.
What is the wishes of the commission? Do you want me to read it?
Summarize. I can summarize it, cause most people, I, I'd like for you to read the whole thing, cause I have no idea what you're talking about.
Well, since Commissioner Bone wants it read, then read it, Commissioner Perkins.
Chairman, would you like to read it or do you like me to read it?
No, sir, you can read that one.
All right, this is the resolution expressing the opposition of Chilton County Commission to restrictions placed on fishing tournaments on the Couso River and affirming the commitment to improve local fisheries. Whereas the Couso River is a vital natural resource and a cornerstone of the local economy and the quality of life for the residents of Chilton County. And whereas fishing tournaments on the Couso River are an important economic driver for the community, drawing anglers and tourists from outside the region and contributing to the local hospitality, retail, service industries, and whereas the Couso River has long been recognized for its excellent fishing opportunities, attracting world-class anglers, and offering a premier destination for fishing tournaments, which in turn generates significant economic benefits through tourism, hotel stays, dining, and other local spending. Whereas restrictions placed on fishing tournaments would negatively impact local businesses, tourism regan- revenue, and the livelihoods of citizens who depend on the river's recreational opportunities. Also, whereas the citizens of Chilton County benefit greatly from the enjoyment of the Couso River, restrictions on fishing tournaments would diminish this quality of life in community, reducing opportunities for recreation and economic prosperity for local families. Whereas the current condition of the Couso River's fisheries is good and proper ma- with proper management and support, there's tremendous potential to enhancing the quality of these fisheries to a world-class level, providing both environmental and economic benefits. And whereas the citizens of Chilton County are committed to working collaboratively with the local and state and federal agencies to improve the health and sustainability of the Couso River fisheries while preserving the opportunities for recreational fishing tournaments that support the tourism and the local economy. Now therefore be it resolved that the Chilton County Commission, as follows, opposes these restrictions. The Chilton County Commission expresses its strong opposition in, in the imposition of restrictions on fishing tournaments on the Couso River, as such restrictions would have adverse effects on local tourism, the economy, and the quality of life of the citizens. Support for fisheries enhancement, the Chilton County Commission affirms its support for efforts aimed at enhancing the existing fisheries on the Couso River. Recognizing the potential for improvement to achieve world-class fisheries, the council or commission here encourages cooperative efforts between local stakeholders, environmental groups, and governmental agencies to create and implement effective strategies for improving river health and fisheries management. Commitment to economic growth, the Chilton County Commission reaffirms its commit- commitment to supporting economic development through responsible management of the Couso River's natural resources, including the continuation of fishing tournaments that bring value to the local economy and promote the river's global reputa- reputation as a premier destination. Collaboration for solutions, as the Chilton County Commission encourages the ongoing collaboration among residents, businesses, tourism organizations, and regulatory bodies to ensure that any management plans for the Couso River's fisheries both prioritize environmental sustainability and the economic welfare of the community. And then it will have the, um, the adoption date of this date and be signed by the commissioners and then turned into, uh, the proper, the proper agencies. That's how the resolution reads. As I stated yesterday, it was, um, supported by, uh, many, many other local agencies. And, um, already been adopted by various, uh, cities and communities and along, along Couso chain where they're, where they're affected. So I'm gonna ask for the resolution, the resolution to be signed.
Okay, and I didn't, not, we, did we get a, see, okay, anyone second that?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Bone, motion by Commissioner Perkins. Any questions or discussion?
Appreciate, uh, your work on this, Commissioner Perkins.
Well, I will, I will make a comment. I, I do appreciate, um, uh, unknown to, to us, but, uh, Ms. Abby Brown with Couso River Keepers, who's done some substantial work on this, uh, also along with some other places. She's here in attendance tonight, and I'd like to thank her for being here and supporting it.
Well, it's like I stated last night, I read this. I don't fish, so it doesn't really, it doesn't have any impact on me personally. But what I've seen of this and what I know fishing industry brings to this county, a lot of people fuss about it, but there's a big economic impact to this county tax-wise. And I think you got people interfering in something that they got, need to keep their nose out of, my, my personal opinion. Any other discussion? Okay, all in favor, let it be known by raising your hand. All opposed, and it passes unanimously. Oh, oh, sorry, Commissioner Headley abstains. All right, anything else, Commissioner Perkins?
That is all, thank you.
Okay, uh, we have, uh, a couple invoices we need to approve, uh, Thompson tractor invoices. And, uh, can I get a motion to approve those invoices?
Second.
Commissioner, uh, Hall, motion, Commissioner Perkins, second, to approve the Thompson Caterpillar invoices. Any question or comments? All in favor, let it be known by raising your hand. All opposed, any abstentions? Commissioner Childers abstains. Okay, the next thing on the agenda is something that's been a pretty hot topic for a couple of weeks in the county. And I think a lot of it is caused by, uh, misinformation or confusion on some people's parts. The new department of County Commission is the Animal Control Department. Now I'm speaking, this is coming from Alan Williams. This is not a direction from the commission. That's why I put it under me on the agenda. The department was set up to comply with state law. And that state law is Alabama Code nineteen seventy-five, three dash seven, A dash seven. We are bound to provide, in the state's words, a pound and provide for the treatment and housing of stray dogs, cats, and ferrets. And we have been put in the position in the last year of having to develop and establish an animal control department. Because the mandates from the state were not being met. And I'm not faulting, I'm not here to fault anyone tonight. Our mission is a mandate from the state that we have to do these things. The Humane Society's been unable at times to take in animals brought to them. And that puts us at odds with the state of Alabama and the law. So at this point, we are in the process, have be- or have begun, the Chilton County Animal Control Department. We have hired a director. The director is not a Humane Society employee. She is a depart- uh, department employee for the county. We are in the process of hiring technicians down there, and at some point we'll hire an assistant director to help. Right now, some of the Humane Society volunteers are helping, other, plenty of other volunteers are helping that are, have no affiliation with the Humane Society, and they are very much appreciated. But this is gonna be a transition period. And it, hopefully it won't take but a few weeks to get something established down there and an order established so we know what animals are coming in, when they're coming in, where they're coming in from, and where they're going. So I know there's been some people who seem to have hurt feelings, and I'm sorry. But there's growing pains with anything you do. And this is gonna be a positive for the county, and the Humane Society's mission is their own. The Humane Society is a nonprofit on their own bylaws, their own rules. They control themselves. We've not been able, in the past four years that I've been on this commission, to tell the Humane Society what we have to have done. Suggestions have been made. I don't know where, I'm not, like I said, I am not faulting anybody here tonight. Former commissioners, anybody of the Humane Society. I'm looking at going forward and doing what we can to take care of these stray animals. I grew up having to dispose of animals thrown out at my house when I was a teenager. And anybody that knows me, you don't mess with my dog. You mess with my dog, it's like messing with my child. But at the same time, we have responsibilities as a commission to comply with the state mandate. And whatever we gotta do to do that, you know, that's the task of our new director. And that's pretty much what I've got to say on that tonight. Now, if anybody has anything else to say, the proper procedure will be to suspend the rules.
Chairman, Chairman, I move to suspend the rules.
Motion Commissioner Childers to suspend the rules. Do I have a second? Second, Commissioner Hall. All in favor of suspending the rules, let it be known by raising your hand. And it is unanimous to suspend the rules. We are in an informal, open discussion, sitting. Anybody who'd like to speak, as long as you're speaking to this subject.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I asked the chair to, uh, uh, allow me to speak tonight if, uh, if I felt the need. Um, after last night, I, I, I feel like I do need to speak up for a couple of people. After the chair assigned me as a co liaison to the, um, animal shelter, it's now. Uh, I started visiting the animal shelter in November after I was elected. And, um, and I have seen the difference between what I saw in November and December and what I've seen in the last eight days. Our director has been in charge for only eight days. And the difference is already stark. We're way away from where we wanna be. We've got money set aside in the budget to refurbish that building. Um, I'm currently working on bids, uh, uh, for the refurbishment of the building. Um, I'm waiting on a couple more bids before I'll be able to bring, um, um, an, a suggestion to the commission. And at that point, we'll determine whether or not we need to let it out for bid, or we can work on the building piecemeal and, uh, try to save some money in the budget so that we can put that in maintenance to cover us for the next few years. So we've got a, we, we have a lot of money this time, but that money will not be there next time. The, the money for refurbishment wa- is a one-time money, so we have to make the most of it. We have, uh, we've had volunteers to come in and do a lot already. We've had new people come in and help when the others decided that they didn't wanna be a part of it. I am very proud of what Jimmy Hardy has done. Jimmy Hardy has done everything I have asked him to do. Not, he hasn't asked me to do anything. He has done everything that I've asked him to do. When we could not pay for employees to be down there, when someone that we assigned to, to help run the place thought that they could, um, have volunteers to help keep the place going until we could get all the staff in place, that turned out to not be the case. So I called Jimmy and asked Jimmy, I said, Jimmy, will the Humane Society pay for a couple of employees to come down and help until we can get our full staff in place? He said, absolutely. So he figured out a way, he figured out the people. I gave him a couple of suggestions, and it actually was the couple of suggestions that I gave him. Wasn't his suggestions, it was my suggestions. Again, he's done everything, and then when that did not work out, he went to work and found two others. And all of a sudden, they're getting paid, something that we could not do. And the young lady that we've hired to run that place has been cleaning that place some days by herself. And y'all, there are dogs down there on top of dogs, on top of dogs, and cats. And that young lady's having to clean those cages by herself. Sheriff, thank you for sending inmates down. We're gonna try to coordinate with you better. They did an incredible job to help, uh, Christina get where she needs to be. This young lady is knowledgeable. She is protecting the county, uh, from lawsuits. You can't just go in there and grab a dog and take it out. You got to, you have to have a contract with the Chilton County Animal Shelter, not the Humane Society. They are no longer in operation. Chilton County is running that. It is a department of the county, just like the road department. Christina is the director, and she is willing to speak with anyone. People that I've asked that, that have complained to me, I said, have you spoken with Christina? Have you gone down to visit the shelter? No, I haven't. The two ladies that spoke last night, both said that they have not spoken with her or visited the shelter. Please go visit the shelter and see what is going on. We're, we're, we're eight days into this, eight days. Eight months, it's gonna be different, I guarantee you. It's gonna be different than the last eight years, and I guarantee you that's gonna happen.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else?
I just wanna speak that out. I am co liaison with Mr. Childers. Thank you, thank you. Turn it off. I repeat, I am the co liaison with Mr. Childers. And I, uh, you know, asked, told him that I didn't, I was not familiar with the building aspects of repair, construction, and everything, and I want to kinda stay on the side with the, um, staff and, um, some of those things. And, um, so I'm not, I work a full-time job, uh, so I'm not as accessible as, um, Commissioner Childers is. However, people do reach out to me via, uh, email or whatever. And I want to, uh, us to, you know, move forward, nothing that, have no intentions of anything negative towards our, uh, director. How's he in on the interview? And she interviewed well, um, putting the policies and procedures and the things in place. I feel she's doing a great job, and I've been in and out with her on different occasions. However, uh, the part on the Humane Society is that the bylaws were not being followed. And, uh, I can't, I just could not, um, agree until we get those things in, in, in place. I'm friends with, um, no one, this is business to me, and I want to continue with business. And I want our donors and volunteers and everybody to come back and work, hopefully with the county. So I just want to, you know, I wanna be here for support. And, um, I stand, you know, on my word, and the Humane Society have to respect my position and to work with me and everything that Alan and I should be, we try, we initially tried to keep it on the same page. And he'll text me or I'll text him, and that's the relationship that we have to develop because I'm new into the business, but I'm nev- not always, uh, available. But I can be reached, I'm always obtainable by phone. And the citizens should be able to have a voice, not to fight against, but to work with. And everybody that I'm working with is working with the Chilton County, uh, Animal Control. I have no say in the Humane Society, other than that if we're in collaboration with them, they- them, they follow the rules and, uh, the bylaws so that we can move forward, and as Alan said, eight months from now, yeah, we wanna see this. And yes, I did go down and helped with the cleaning, and there are some areas of opportunity, and there are more areas of opportunities as things come up, so patience is a virtue, and go meet, uh, I got someone, uh, that, you know, that said, hey, I wanna go down, but I don't want to be, um, you know, I'm a little bit nervous, well, no one's going to attack you, uh, I'll go with you. So we want those relationships to be open, and we don't want that reputation that everybody's scared and somebody's gonna pull them off. No, this is, uh, this public, public property taxpayers' dollars, so thank you all.
Thank you. Uh, one thing I don't think I made clear, and Commissioner Childers touched on, and as did Commissioner Hall, we want the Humane Society as it exists to collaborate with the commission with the, through the animal department, if they so choose, but that collaboration will have to be under the rules of the Chilton County Animal Control, because since we have started this department, and we're gonna go by the rules that state as mandated for us, and we're inviting Humane Society, any group who wants to work and help with it, they can contact Commissioner Childers, or Commissioner Hall, or myself, or the Commission Office, and let us know who you're wanting to, or drop by the building and talk to Christina. I think a lot of this misinformation would have been directed a different way if everybody who's had something to say would have given her the opportunity to tell you her side of the story first. Anybody that knows me, I'm gonna go to the ends of the earth to get the right answer before I say something, and I don't think that was done in all of these situations. And unless anybody else has got something to say, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion for adjourn.
Motion by Commissioner Bone, second by Commissioner Headley to adjourn, all in favor, raise your hand, and we are adjourned. Thank you.